...asking that the burden of the penalty and the fine be put on the homeowner. And what I believe that's gonna do, what I believe that's gonna do is it's gonna require homeowners to make sure their gardeners use the proper tools. And in doing that, negotiate the price, negotiate the time, and allow for this change to happen in its proper way. Because right now, what we're doing is we're finding the gardener. And finding the gardener, he's gonna have homes where he can get away with it and homes where he's not gonna be able to get away with it. The incentive is still gonna be there to use a blow dryer when, a leaf blower, whenever he can excuse that. But I think that if we put the burden on the employer, the reality is you'll have a much smoother transition. And I think that that fine money should be put into a trust fund for education purposes. And I also think that the reality is we should have an annual report that tells us how this program is working. If we're gonna pass such an ordinance, let's understand who has the responsibility in the marketplace. And hopefully, all of you members will consider the amendment and remember that on a golf course, you don't have leaf blowers, you don't have the noise pollution, and you don't have the environment being polluted. But I think it's gonna create a much smoother transition and allow gardeners to understand that their employers are willing to sacrifice. And hopefully, if they want those jobs, they'll comply with their employer's request.
Thank you, Mr. Alatory. Mr. Holden. See, I told you, you're gonna speak again.
No, I just, I just got a kinda punch and I had to come back. This is round two. No, I just, I just wanna respond to my friend and colleague. I'm not an elitist. Sometimes you have to use just good judgment and do what's right for all. Sometime you have to even protect people against themselves when they do bodily harm to themselves and to others. No one will deny, no one in this room here with us today, those who are in support of the leaf blowers and those who are opposed, would stand up and in a good, clear conscience and sane mind and say that that, those particles and the noise and all is good for our health. They can't say that. If you can't say that, then what is all this discussion about? I live in a house. It's alright. I live in a house. Some of those who don't understand what we're talking about, they live in apartments and big high rises. So they don't, they can't relate to that noise. They can't relate to those particles being inhaled on a continuous basis. I mean, I go outside of my house, I say, "Stop it! Charge me more!" But stop that pollution. Stop that noise. And then, when you work all day and all night, as many of you do, and I know you put a lot of hours in, there you are, trying to sleep. How many people try to sleep and they wake them up like that? They got a noise ordinance and they do it all the time. And I know Mr. Browdy talked about that you're at home because you have this homework ordinance, but even on Saturday, they're there. And they disregard the religious Sunday and they come out on Sunday and they're there. And they blowing and blowing and blowing. Enough is enough. I'm gonna support Mr. Browdy. Mr. Browdy is not gonna be with us in the city council too much longer. He's leaving. And I want you to know, he's got a tremendous track record of success. I heard him read off a litany of things in the back room. And I wanna add this one to the list. That we can't let you down Marvin, and more importantly, we can't let the people down that you represent, nor should we let all these people down today, even the ones who want the blower. We're gonna protect their health too, because they won't protect themselves. Thank you.
Mr. Alakon.
I'm still in shock from that eloquent presentation, but um, I, this, this has been a very difficult issue for me for a lot of reasons. And I supported the, I supported the ordinance, I supported the ordinance that was introduced to ban gas-powered leaf blowers, but have been working ever since to see if we could deal with a complex issue in a more deliberate way, rather than to pass a sweeping ordinance that would heavily impact clearly the, the workers and also the homeowners who pay for these services. The fact is that we do have to put more restrictions on, on gas-powered leaf blowers. The fact is that however, our focus should, I'm, I'm a little unclear as to why this ordinance has been written in such a way that it, it specifically, the only thing it does is eliminate gas-powered leaf blowers. It does not deal with the issue of noise, because you could use other leaf blowers that, that will be just as loud without even, without those being impacted the least by this ordinance. And so, I have submitted a substitute motion, which has been seconded by council member Hernandez, that, that does a couple of significant things. First of all, it focuses on the issue of noise by looking at, at the, the level of decibels to bring it under things like lawn mowers and other, other equipment that, that exceed the decibel levels in it. What it, what it suggests is that by, that, that we focus on 65 decibels as the standard. And that would apply across the board, not just to the gasoline-powered leaf blowers. But then, then the homeowners or the advocates for, for this particular ban have said, "Well, we can't enforce it." And because my time is running out, I'm gonna just touch on that and then I would ask that you read this and give it a lot of consideration, because I think we have to be very careful with what we're doing here. And there are many other provisions in it. But, but in terms of the enforcement, I think it would be simple enough for us to create a decal process where the city clerk, upon providing licenses to the gardeners and other service providers, if there are some, would, would, would put a decal on their leaf blower, and if that leaf blower doesn't have a decal, then it's automatically illegal. So it can be enforced, we just have to go about devising a way to make it, make it work. There are some other provisions. We have, right now, they can use leaf blowers between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. I think we need to tighten that. It's, and, and I believe that if we, if we tighten that to 8:00 to 5:00 or 8:00 to 4:00, I think my motion says 8:00 to 4:00, Monday through Saturday, I think it, it will create less tremendous, much less impact on those who, as Mr. Holden was pointing out, are, are awakened by, by these things. It's not gonna resolve that issue for those that wake up after 8 o'clock, but for those who, who are trying to wake up before 8 o'clock, it will substantially mitigate that. I'll, I'll press my button again.
Ms. Goldberg.
Well, this is sort of another one of those on the one hand, on the other end. I think I'm probably more concerned about the noise than the pollutants, not because I don't have problems with breathing the air, but because we have so many polluting factors between cars and emissions on oil refineries and so forth, that I'm not sure that I can single one out as being more important than another. We need to be doing something about all of them. But I am concerned about the noise. We did go and take a look at the difference in cost between an electric and a gasoline blower, and there really is not substantial difference between the two. I thought there was, but there really isn't. The electric ones were slightly higher, but I had thought they were like double the amount from the people I had met with before the last one, and it's nothing like that. And the, the electric ones are substantially quieter than the gasoline ones. There's no doubt about that. They are substantially quieter. So I think on the whole, I was leaning in that direction. Then I got some material from someone who puts a muffler on a gasoline-powered one and says that he gets it down below or about to where the electric one is. And I, I don't know if that's true or not, but that would have an effect on, on my decisions if someone could tell me that, because I might be willing to say that, that they either have to be electric or with this muffler, or any muffler that brings them down below a certain level. I'm not convinced that the issues in, in the substitute go fast enough. It would take another two years to get anywhere. And even then, I, I'm not sure if we couldn't do better than that. I, I really do think that we have an issue though of noise pollution that affects not just people who work at home, but a very large aging population of seniors, for whom, as we all know, as, as, as members of the council, are very disturbed by these noises. And we don't have a lot of blowers in my district, so this is not a big issue in my district. But I do know that where there are seniors in, in my district, this issue does come up when I go and talk with the senior groups. They are very bothered by it. So I, I'm not sure where I am yet, but I would like somebody to talk about this muffler and what they know about it, if they've done any research on it, and, and because I am concerned that the noise pollution has to go down. I am satisfied though that the electric ones are not that much more expensive than the gasoline ones, which at least removes some of my original opposition to saying we should go electric. But if somebody has any information on the mufflers, I'd like to hear it.
Mr. Browdy.
Now, Mr. President, members of the council, I'd like to respond to the comments made by Mrs. Walters and Mr. Hernandez, that this is an elitist thing. Just the opposite is the case. What is the present system? We are in effect subsidizing the rich. We are subsidizing the rich by allowing them to get their yards cleaned at a lower price. And who is paying for this? Subsidy of the rich? All of us, rich and poor, because we all suffer from the noise pollution. We all suffer from the health pollution that comes into the air. All of us, no matter where we live, no matter how rich or how poor, we all suffer in order to subsidize the rich, who can easily pay a little more for their gardener in order to have this other system. So I, I cannot subscribe to their point of view. And with regard to the, the muffler, Ms. Goldberg, I have been associated with this project for eight years. If there was any manufacturer who had a muffler or any thing, they would come forward and, and show it to me. But I have not seen it and I have not heard of it. And it isn't just noise alone, it's the question of the, of the, of the health hazards. With regard to Mr. Alakon's motion, I, I think it would be a nightmare of, of regulation and, and the idea of putting labels on each machine. This ordinance was designed for its simplicity, for its ease of enforcement, for the simplicity of being able to understand it. So I ask for an I vote, a no vote on all of the proposed amendments and an I vote on the ordinance as it is before you, the simple two-line ordinance.
Mr. Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I am going to support Mr. Browdy's motion. I do not support the substitute, substitute nine from Mr. Alakon for some reason Ms. Goldberg mentioned. I think it is, it's too complex and I think it is not gonna have a significant enough impact on the issues of both noise and air quality. I think if we were moving in the direction merely of muffling the gas-powered vehicles, uh, blowers as opposed to eliminating their use, we would be putting up with what the AQMD estimates to be more than five and a half tons of hydrocarbon emissions every day. Five and a half tons of hydrocarbon emissions every day are attributed to gas-powered leaf blowers according to the AQMD. That is an enormous amount of pollution within our basin. Surely, it's true that multiple sources contribute to air pollution in the basin and that gas-powered leaf blowers are a small percentage of that. But five and a half tons is five and a half tons. So I'm gonna support Mr. Browdy's motion, both on the premise that it will do something to advance quality of life because it reduces noise, but also because there is not an insignificant amount of air pollution directly attributed to them, and we can do better than that. Thank you.
Mr. Alatory.
Mr. President, members, I have rise to support Mr. Alakon's motion. I've listened to the, this has been a debate that's been with us for the last 10 years that I've been here, and it's always been centered around noise. That's what the entire issue over the past 10 years has been centered on. Now, it's centered on both on noise and on pollution. I'd venture to say that the leaf blower in relationship to other polluters is insignificant. But as it relates to the bigger issue, and that is on the question of noise, look at, I, there are neighbors of mine that have leaf blowers, and yeah, the noise isn't bad, but that's just one of the things that you put up with whenever you have the luxury of being able to hire a gardener. Yeah, I don't necessarily like it, but it's also a fact of life. I'm more afraid of other pollutants than I am of the leaf blowers and the noise. And I think what Mr. Alakon has is a, is a way of bringing down the decibels over a period of time. You know, this is a, an industry that is made up of, primarily ethnic and racial minorities as well as, as others. But it is a honest living. I don't care what anybody says that a leaf blower is, that using the broom is just as fast as using a leaf blower. I just don't buy that. I mean, I've cut enough lawns and, and the like to know how long it takes you when you're just using a, a broom. But I just think that ladies and gentlemen, as we're talking about an industry, if there's a way of bringing down the, the decibels, I think that we ought to go move in that direction, rather than just say that in four or five months from now, you know, the use of the leaf blower is gonna be out of business. Cause we just bought about 120 leaf blowers, the city of Los Angeles Parks and Recreation. And, you know, we already say that the, the gardeners are already overtaxed and overworked. I don't know what we bought them for, but I mean, we bought them because obviously it is a tool to try and, you know, increase the, the rapidness of, of the cutting of lawns and, and the, the brushing of, of, you know, leaves and everything else. But let's take a reasoned approach. I think this is a reasoned approach, Mr. Alakon's motion. I think that it deals with the issues that I think a lot of people have talked about, and that is the noise pollution. You know, why not do that instead of just drastically saying you're out of business within a period of time? I think that it's ridiculous to do that. I think that we should take a reasoned approach, and I would support Mr. Alakon's motion.
Mr. Mr. Alakon.
Council members, as I said before, this, I don't think anybody is suggesting that this is a simple issue. And I don't think that a simple ordinance can resolve a complex issue. There are many, many things that we are impacting by creating a, a simple approach. Now, Mr. Browdy, I appreciate what you're doing, what you're trying to do, and I, I know that you have the proper motivation at heart. But I, when, when you talk about unwieldy regulation, I mean, that's not consistent with, with a lot of measures that you've passed over the time that you've been here. Indeed, we have a responsibility as government to do things properly, and not just to come up with simple laws and try to, try to just ramrod things through. We have to deal with all, all aspects of the issue. And, and that means that we have to, to look at this from, from a lot of other perspectives. Your ordinance, for example, does not do anything to restrict when other leaf blowers can, can be used during hours that, that are not regulated. Or now that are regulated between the hours of, of 7:00 and 9:00, they can, they can use an electric one right in somebody's next-door window, and nobody can stop it. I don't think that helps. I mean, it's so, so even, if, if you wanna look at the problem, let's look at the whole problem. If we, and the reason I, I looked at 65 decibels is because that's, that's less than a lawn mower. And, you know, everybody recognizes we need to get to the next level that is lower, but what are we gonna do? We're gonna start, stop using lawn mowers and, and, you know, let's, I don't mind sitting down with the industry and putting them to the test of reducing the negative impacts on, on the environment, but I don't think that we can just, we can just deal with complex problems in, in a simple fashion. My substitute motion also, also looks at, at the issue of blowing stuff on other people's property. It requires that, that if you blow it into the street, for example, that you must pick it up. It, it, it does provide a timeframe, an expedited timeframe for what we call sensitive receptors such as schools, churches, hospitals, convalescent homes. And, and I don't think that those should be restricted to gas, gas-powered leaf blowers. Finally, Ms. Goldberg mentions that she is concerned about the timeframe. This was my first offering. If, if somebody wants to come up with a more expeditious timeframe for these particular positions, I'd be happy to, to accept an amendment in that regard. But I think it would be the worst thing to not continue the discussion on this issue, regardless of what happens with this particular ordinance. We need to, to continue to refine it as technology advances, as the, the economics, as the economic issues become clearer. I think we need to get more information about the health-related issues, and, and my substitute motion asks for the Environmental Affairs Department to, to start collecting information on the health impacts of this, so that we can continue to track this beyond this ordinance. So yes, the ordinance is simple, and then it stops. We need to go forward with, with a lot of other considerations. My substitute motion does that, and I, and I would urge that you give stronger consideration. I, I would hope that we could get sufficient votes to, to pass the substitute.
Ms. Galanter. Ms. Galanter.
You know, I'm a little confused about why we're having this debate now. It seems to me that what ought to be happening now is that we should be putting in place the tool to implement the policy that we came out of the last hearing with. We had a, a policy discussion at great length. As if I recall correctly, it was over several days, but it was certainly at great length. I remember that part very vividly. And many of these issues were discussed at that time, all of them, as far as I can remember. This is an issue that's been with us for a long time. The policy debate's been done already. I don't understand why we are redoing the whole thing as if there were, there had never been a debate before and there were no ordinance on the table. And I hope that sometime today, before, before sundown, we will actually get to voting on this ordinance. But every time I look up, there's more people who want to rehash the debate again. So I just wanna plead with my colleagues, this, we, we had this debate. It was a debate in which many of us had very strong feelings and a lot of different concerns. We articulated them again and again and again, and we are doing so again today, and I just saw another name go up there. I'd like us to get to a vote.
Ms. Goldberg.
Well, I was gonna move the previous question on the entire matter, if everybody has spoken at least once.
Well, there's still some that have not spoken twice.
Well, then I'll push my button and move that we end the debate after they've spoken, but that's all I rose to do.
Mr. Hernandez.
You know, members of the council, I just need the city attorney, because I think Mr. Browdy is headed in the right direction, is trying to do the right thing for the right reasons. And I also am aware he won't be here next year if this debate is to be continued. But probably, but part of my concern is who does, is there a fine attached to this very simple ordinance?
Is there what, a fine?
A fine attached?
A fine? No.
So if there's no compliance, there is no fine?
Oh, wait a minute, there, we have Mr. Pritzker who can speak to that.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we understand what's, what's going on here, because it's not as simple as we try and pretend it is. And I need all the proponents on both sides to understand, there is a fine attached, is that correct?
Uh, yes, Mr. Hernandez, like every other section of the municipal code, violation of the section is a misdemeanor.
And that's a $250 fine?
No, I, I believe it's greater than that. I think it's a $1,000 fine.
Up to $1,000. Now, could you share with me how we will enforce that?
Well, I, I would assume that, now, I think you should be aware that copies of the proposed ordinance have been forwarded to the police department as well as to street maintenance and several other departments of the city. I assume that people would call the police department and they would come out and issue, and issue citations.
Okay, now, members of the council, the reason I'm asking these kinds of questions is because if the intent is really to do something about it, when I was amending it to say we put the burden on the homeowner, the contractor, the person who is basically hiring for these services, what happens is now it's enforceable. I mean, you have an address and you have a burden to your neighbors, and your neighbors are gonna report you if you're disturbing them or the environment that's being created by your employees disturbing them. By not accepting this amendment, we're playing games. And, and so I'm just asking the chair, the, the maker of the original ordinance to consider this motion. If he is not to, I'd find it hard to support it simply because I'm playing games. And I wanna do something about it, and so I'd be willing to support it if, you know, 9A is being considered in terms of changing who the burden is put on. And I think you allow for the marketplace to basically change the industry in such a way where it's healthier for everybody. And I just wanted to point that out, because I don't think it's a simple ordinance. I think it's a very complicated ordinance, and I don't think we'll be enforcing it properly if it's not, does not include this kind of a change.
Mrs. Walters.
Uh, Mr. President, I was very serious about the questions that I raised about the city use, and I think it's even more important now that Mr. Alatory says Recreation Parks just purchased some more of these leaf blowers. I wanna know what city departments are using them, the total cost of their using them, what the anticipated cost is going to be if they don't use them, or if, do we intend not to stop using the leaf blowers? And I'd like to know who the enforcement agency is going to be on this? Who are the leaf blower cops gonna be? Going around ticketing people or, or pulling them off jobs? What, how is this going to occur? And I'd like to know what the anticipated allocated time and resource needs are for the enforcing authority. I don't want every, I need some answers to that.
Yeah, do we have Mr. Pritzker?
Well, I could unequivocally state that the enforcement agency would be the police department. Now, with regard to the cost to...
Leaf blower. You just got a new job.
No, it's the same job they previously had. We have an ordinance, as you know, on the books now that controls these, but it has restrictions.
Well, I tell you, we have enough crime in the streets. I don't want police officers going around enforcing folks using, not using leaf blowers. And what about the ones that the city has just purchased? Who besides the Recreation Parks will be using them? What are the monies that we've...
I think the chair of that committee is the one that they arrest, Mrs....
Pardon?
The chair of that committee is the one they arrest.
Okay. Well, uh...
Mrs. Walters is the chair of the committee.
Yeah, well, I'll just order them to stop using them, that's all. But who is, what, what are the realities of this? What has the city just spent on leaf blowers?
Well, I don't know the answer to that question, but a copy of this ordinance has been transmitted to Rec and Parks as well as Street Maintenance. They're aware of the potential effect on their departments, but I would point out to you that this ordinance only applies to these blowers if used within 500 feet of a residence.
Well, I think we're being pretty hypocritical, Mr. President and council members, when the Chair of Budget and Finance tells us that Recreation and Parks and possibly other departments have just purchased leaf blowers. And one other question to Mr. Alakon, I'm, I read your amendment to nine, and it sounds like there's only, maybe only one company that makes these leaf blowers, or are there leaf blowers on the market manufactured by more than one company that make this description?
One of the reasons for, I don't, I don't know. I, I, but one of the reasons for the delay is to, is to ensure that the industry gets serious about producing leaf blowers that have a lower decibel level.
Okay.
See, they're just gonna buy them in some other jurisdiction and bring them in.
All right, do you know, Mr. Pritzker, do you know what the decibel level of the city leaf blowers is?
Yes, the current ban is 65 decibels as measured 50, 50 feet from the source. Yes, the current band is 65 decibels as measured 50 feet from the source.
What is the, the leaf blowers that the city owns?
Oh.
City departments own?
I don't know what the specifications are of those leaf blowers.
Okay, Mrs. Walters, here, Mrs. Chick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I've had my questions answered and they are focused on Mr. Hernandez's motion. I think that we could come up with a much more, if we are saying, and I am, albeit it's been a painful issue, that it is a positive thing to eliminate the use of gas-powered leaf blowers, then I think what Mr. Hernandez is suggesting will end up giving us a much more effective way of having this translate into reality and having these instruments disappear and be replaced by the electric. Can we have a dual system where the fine is both on the property owner who has hired a gardener and is allowing this to occur as well as the gardener? I'm asking the city attorney since this is something that's just come up today.
Theoretically and legally, I think it might be possible to structure an ordinance that way. As a practical matter, there may be some difficulties in enforcement if you have the owners denying that they instructed their gardeners to use the blowers.
If the owners, I'm sorry, deny?
If they deny that the gardener was allowed to use that, if they say, well, I didn't tell my gardener he could use this type of blower, I told him not to use such a blower, then there could be an enforcement problem.
Well, but I think Mr. Hernandez's point is letting the market forces start to play out here. So, okay, I am going to support Mr. Browdy with Mr. Hernandez's amendment.
Ms. Galanter, it's time.
I'm getting into the swing of this now since everybody else is making speeches. I wanted to respond specifically to the concern Mr. Hernandez raised, which I think is a legitimate concern, but I don't think the solution you've proposed quite addresses it. And I would like to look further for a solution to the problem. I'll tell you why in a second. So just so it's clear to everybody, since I don't recall mentioning this earlier, I'm going to support Mr. Browdy's ordinance and I'm going to look for modifications where there may be problems separately from what we do today. The reason I think that your solution doesn't quite work is that most of the people, I believe, most of the people who employ gardeners are not there when the gardeners are there. So if, you know, you have a hard-working family that has just figured out they can't keep up their property without hiring a gardener and they hire a gardener and the gardeners, as we've heard, a number of them have grave concerns that they can't do their work in the time they've allotted unless they use a leaf blower, may use it, the homeowner won't know, won't be in a position to say, listen, you got to stop that. And so you wind up with exactly the same kind of problem that could happen the other way. This is a legitimate problem. We need to find a way for nobody to get in trouble over this and just to have the situation take care of itself. But I don't think that transferring the burden off of the gardener and saying the gardener has no responsibility, but the homeowner has, or the employer has the responsibility is going to do it. So I am not going to support that particular amendment. But I do think that you're right, that we need to look for some way to spread this around and sort of really pinpoint whose responsibility it is. But the list has gotten longer since I last raised this.
Mr. Fuhr.
Thanks, Mr. President. As you can tell, a lot of us are trying to figure out a way to get to yes today on this. And I have just a couple of questions. Is there contemplated by the ordinance as it's drafted, some means of providing like a warning or broad notification or something to assure that people are aware of the change in law and aware that they're violating it before they're actually penalized for doing so?
The operating date is March.
I know, the operating date is March, but is there anything besides the news article that Hugo is going to write that's going to call that to the public's attention?
Well, no, however, I would add that, as you know, we do publish all these ordinances in the newspaper.
I get it. Explain to me the logistics of requiring a warning one time by whoever enforces before imposing the penalty.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Ken, is there, because there's got to be some way, I think, this is not going to be wide, the notices published in the paper are not going to be widely read. Mr. Hernandez's motion, Ms. Galanter's response, Mr. Hernandez's motion makes some sense, which is to say a lot of the homeowners aren't going to be around. Yet at the same time, the shared responsibility notion makes some sense and may also get us to the point where there are votes to move the thing forward. So the question is, is there a way to do that and yet meet Ms. Galanter's concern, which is well-taken, that some of the homeowners who might otherwise be cited aren't going to be aware of this and some of the gardeners might not be aware of it either? And is there a way to just simply direct that the enforcing entities don't issue a citation for a first violation?
You know, you could...
There's no way to know it's a first violation is the answer, I guess.
Yeah, if you want to, you know, modify the proposed ordinance, the council can choose to do that.
But without creating this huge bureaucracy and computer system and stuff, there's no real way to know whether it's a first violation.
Traffic cops do that all the time. They say, okay, I'm going to just let you off with a warning this time. And then if it's the same route, they're going to see it's the same gardeners the next week, they'll know they let them off last.
Yeah, some policy to this effect, I think, would be a useful thing and I'll figure out how to craft that in a motion and come back.
Mr. Browdy.
Mr. President and members, I accept Mr. Hernandez's motion with the understanding that the motion will require both provisions, that the leaf blow, gas-powered leaf blowers will be prohibited, and secondly, that the homeowners will share the responsibility by our ability to impose a fine on a homeowner who allows a gas-fired engine to be utilized on his property. And I would request that the city attorney be instructed to bring this back to this council within a week and allow us to schedule it at a time when we have a substantial number of council persons present.
So you're moving to continue this a week after...
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. No, 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 no. I want, after my motion is, after Mr. Hernandez's motion is approved. Perhaps the city attorney can clarify this.
Yes, if you approve 9A, we would have to redraft the ordinance. It would come back into council as a first reading ordinance and we need about a week.
That's all I'm talking about.
Okay, well, we're changing wording in 9A.
Great. Okay. All right, Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, I move the previous question on the entire matter.
Okay, prepare the roll on the previous question, which would cut off debate. If eight or more vote for it, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
As you can see, even the council members were tired. Now we have Mr. Hernandez's motion first.
Mr. President, since you have a substitute motion on the desk, you have to first vote on the question of whether to substitute Alarcon's motion for the ordinance that you have before you on today's agenda.
Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Two ayes, 11 noes.
Have that failed, now we have Mr. Hernandez.
Now you have the amendment by Councilman Hernandez, yes.
Mr. Hernandez's motion.
Could you explain, what do you mean as modified? Could you elaborate on that? 9A as modified, but like what? Homeowners and gardeners hired by...
It's not homeowners, it's employers.
Employers and gardeners.
Employers in lieu of homeowners?
Yes.
All right. And you have 9A as amended before you.
Okay, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 3 noes.
That is approved now.
Now, the ordinance will be presented next week, next Tuesday, as amended by 9A. And you have 14 members expected on that day.
Okay. So we don't have to take any other votes today?
No, because the ordinance would have to be drafted with the amendment before council could vote on it, Mr. President.
Okay, then we'll move on to the next item. Those of you who were here on that item can stay and watch this alghos body perform or you can leave quietly. And I can see that you're really following instructions. Okay, the next item.
Item 10, Mr. President, is an ordinance first reading. It's the 1911 Act, Vena Avenue...